Eric, can you see us?
I can see you, yes.
Diane, take your mic off if you want to talk.
We also have Mike Severt, who is working with Mr. Cheney. Who's just came on. You will want to present, correct, Mike?
Mike will have some information if he can get his stuff working.
Hey, Mike.
How are you?
Hi, Mike.
Hi there.
Alrighty, so this is... This is the August 11th, 2020 Planning Board meeting. I have a statement I have to read before we start here. So Diane, this may need to be corrected as I go along here, but as chair of the Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and/or other electronic means. We are utilizing GoToMeeting for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. Is this... So the phone number I have Diane is 1-866-899-4679? Is that the correct phone number? Hello?
He's muted. Diane, we can't hear you. You have your mute on.
Eric, repeat the number. I have it in front of me.
I have the number too.
I have 1-866-899-4679.
The number on the public notice is 1-646-558-8656.
And that is correct.
Okay, and that's... So then 94501350879?
Correct.
Okay. Or by clicking on the following website. Boy, I can't even read this. HTTPS forward slash forward slash global, GoToMeeting.com, join. Eight... Can you... I can't read that. Can anybody read what that says?
Diane, your mic is...
I can't hear you.
The one now? Alright.
There you go.
The Zoom meeting, it's not a GoToMeeting. And it's HTTPS dot back...
Thank you. This meeting is also being aired on Newmarket Channel 13 for those wishing to watch on their TV and streaming on www新marketnh.gov/channeldash13. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the board. Ah, I can't even read that. Can you read that Diane? That's too small. I can't even read that.
Hang on a minute.
WWW... Okay, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW-newmarketNewHampshire.gov forward slash planning dash board. I believe that's it. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call... Wow. 603-659-3617, extension 1321. Or email channeldash13@newmarketnewhampshire.gov. During the meeting, if public is unable to attend the meeting and the event of public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during the meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. With each... When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under right to know law. So I will start the roll call. Vice Chair Shelton.
Present, no one in the room with me.
Tom Plant and Diane Hardy.
I'm here. No one's in the room with me. Thank you.
Bill Doucette.
Present, alone.
Christian Matthews.
Present and alone.
Jamie Bruton, we know is not here. Sarah Finch, we know is not here. Ted Seeley.
Present and alone.
Mikael Zahorek.
Present and alone.
Okay, I will appoint both you and Ted to be members tonight, filling in for Jamie and Sarah. So first on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Alrighty, so now I'm going to open the meeting up to public comment. It is 7:11 PM and I did hear that there's somebody in the public that wanted to speak. Would you please state your name and address, ma'am, before you start speaking?
Yes, my name is Roberta Bronka. I live at 30 Great Hill Drive, Newmarket, New Hampshire. And I wanted to talk about the issue of detached additional dwelling units and as part of a housing planning in Newmarket. I understand that currently the state... It does... The state law requires additional dwelling units to be allowed in a town, but that does not require detached units. And I understand Newmarket is one of those towns that has decided not to allow detached units. And there were a lot of reasons I think it's important for Newmarket to be open to all types of workforce housing, housing that can help families to stay together and to help each other. One issue that came up for us recently, especially with COVID making nursing homes frankly a more stressful place to be. They're having a difficult time managing COVID because they're overstaffed and understaffed, excuse me. And so anyway, we were talking about having, being able to have multi-generational housing and have it be affordable, something we could live in and rent out our house or that a family member could live in if they couldn't live alone anymore. My husband advocated for a detached dwelling unit. And I said, "Oh, that's going to be expensive. We'll attach something. We should have and put an addition on the house." And we walked around all four sides of our house and there is something on every side, a utility, a gas main, a water main, basement bulkhead that would have to be moved or built around. We figured out the only way to do it would be to give up our dining room. And so that's only my personal story, but my point being that allowing detached units can be a way to allow families to have multi-generational housing or can be a way to... You know, people worry that renters are going to be transient, but often, as someone who was a renter for many years, you end up being transient because housing costs skyrocket so often, especially in New England and especially in a town like ours. So I just wanted to, as a resident, a 15-year resident and a taxpayer, I wanted to put forth by voice as supporting the idea of having detached units and other types of workforce housing in the state, in this town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your input. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak?
I would like to speak. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Alright, my name's Heather Snide. I'm a recent graduate of UNH and I've been living in Newmarket on Church Street for the past three years now. And I'm a renter and I'm actually here to talk about the same thing as Roberta because I realized that I... My parents, who live in Pelham, New Hampshire, had the opportunity to instill a detached ADU unit, which my grandmother had lived in for about six years before she passed. And I wouldn't have had the opportunity otherwise to live so close to my grandmother if I didn't have that opportunity in Pelham for my parents to build that detached ADU unit. And so I'm wondering if there's a lot of people in Newmarket that face similar things. We're going to just mention the multi-generational opportunity to have people in your family live there with you that otherwise couldn't. And not even just people you're related to, but I'm thinking a lot of my friends who lived in Newmarket with me while we were in college then had to leave because it's difficult to afford housing here for a long time, especially right out of college. But there are other opportunities to live here. And one of those could be detached ADU units. So I think that's a good thing to advocate for. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard somebody else say they wanted to speak also?
I did. I don't know if anybody else was. My name is Ellen Reed. I am an 11-year resident, 283, Lita Lane. I am also a state representative for Newmarket, representing Newmarket and Newfield. And I am also, I think we got maybe a message that the detached ADU issue was going to be on the agenda today and apparently it's not. And I'm sorry for whatever communication wires got crossed there, but I'm sure we'll be happy to all reappear before you whenever it is on the agenda again. But just so that you have the background, how I came to this particular issue, I was reached out to by a constituent here in Newmarket who complains that even though, as Roberta had said, the law was protecting ADUs, Newmarket had chosen to not include, in his case, ADUs that were attached to detached garages. And in this particular case, I know that commonly the argument is for, against detached ADUs, some argument against rural character. But in this particular case, it didn't impact rural character at all. It was within an existing garage. And his point was very... It hit home for me because his point was, you know, with the housing affordability crisis on the seacoast as it is, how can we be turning down not just people's ability to have more options, more affordable options to, for places to rent, but also homeowners' ability to have an additional source of revenue, particularly with ADUs? This is something that is kind of, goes throughout your life, right? Like you might, as was just mentioned, you might rent an ADU as a college student. When you own a home, you might build one for an aging parent, as Roberta was talking about. You might move into it later on yourself. This is, this is something that is kind of, if you forgive the expression, a free market solution to, or at least a part of a solution to our housing problem. Now, I... So continuing on with the story, I contacted a Newmarket staff person about this issue, thinking that this was probably easily remedied by just a different interpretation for this particular person. And what I experienced from the staff person kind of is really indicative of a cultural problem that I think that we're experiencing. The staff person told me that we, meaning the town of Newmarket, already do enough for those people. We have trailer parks, we have apartment buildings. And I also heard comments to the effect of, if we allow people to build ADUs, we'll have an influx of people from Massachusetts and crime. And I was just so personally offended that this person who is working for our town would kind of, you know, have those sentiments and that kind of mentality about neighbors, about people who are working hard. As I said, I've lived here, but I have rented the entire 11 years that I've lived here. I work hard. I am a state representative. I'm very active. And I do pay property tax when I pay my landlord, when I pay rent. So the idea that renters are somehow second-class citizens and don't deserve housing or consideration I found to be offensive. And I would really like the Planning Board to kind of reevaluate that culture and look at your policies that you recommend to the town council. And I strongly encourage you to support detached ADUs, as have many other towns around us. And their rural character has not suffered as a result. So I guess I'll leave my comments at that, but I'll be happy to make more comments whenever you do have this on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting? Okay, hearing none. I closed the public comment at 7:20 PM. And next on the agenda is review and approval of minutes. We have the minutes from 7:14. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
We'll make a mo... Bill Doucette will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Ted Seeley.
Okay, Ted, thank you. Any discussion, comments, editorial corrections to the minutes?
Eric?
Yes.
Page four, line eight. That should start a new paragraph that Diane Hardy, so we can... The minutes will reflect that the rest of that paragraph was actually Diane's comments. So not to be confused with the conversation between she and Bill.
Okay.
Same page, line 34. After the Cheney project, insert the word "discussed" to make it clear that we didn't approve anything that meeting that was just discussed earlier. We didn't approve the project that meeting.
Okay.
That is it on my end.
Thank you, Val. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, hearing none. I will take a roll call. Those in favor, when I say your name, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Val Shelton.
Aye.
Bill Doucette.
Aye.
Christian Matthews.
Aye.
Mikael Zahorek.
Aye.
Ted Seeley.
Aye.
And I am abstaining.
Eric, just point of order. Jane Ford is in the meeting as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed Jane. I'm sorry. So Jane, how do you vote on that?
I have to abstain.
Okay. I'm sorry, Jane. I missed you.
That's okay. I miss you too.
I feel a loss here without having to talk on my phone and whatnot. Alright, next on the agenda is Regular Business 77 Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Cheney slash Chinburg Builders, Inc. Ms. Hardy, I understand that they have requested a continuance?
Yes, they have. The letter came in, or the email came in today. And we are working to schedule the project. Technical review. And it's being recommended that the application be continued until the September meeting, which I believe is September 8th, if I'm not mistaken, second Tuesday in September.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Val Shelton. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Jane?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just having a hard time hearing. That's fine. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. If you're in favor of the continuation, say aye. If you're opposed, when I call your name, say nay. Val Shelton?
Aye.
Bill Doucette?
Abstain.
Christian Matthews?
Aye.
Mikael Zahorek?
Aye.
Ted Seeley?
Aye.
And Jane, Jane Ford?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the motion passes 6 to 0 with one abstention. Oh, and Eric Waterman, I vote aye. Alright, next on the agenda is Cheney Property Management Corp., Walter Cheney Jr. I don't have any more of the details. I know this is a design review consultation. So what I'd like to say before we get started is it's not a public hearing. I understand that the abutters have been notified. So what I would like to do is have the applicant or indoor representative give us a presentation and then allow the board to ask any questions we may have and then open it up to the public if there's any abutters that have any questions. Val, do you have in front of you the more detailed explanation of what this project is that we could read into the record?
We just have the applicant.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I mean, it's, everybody knows what it is. So I'll open it up to the applicant and/or their representative to give us a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Mike Severt with MJS Engineering. I'm here with Walter Cheney, so I believe he's also joining by Zoom. So if there's something I can't answer, I think he can. I'll share my screen if I can. Can I do that and put the plan up?
I would like that. Hopefully you can do that.
Says host disabled attendee screen sharing. So is there a host that could enable it?
Get my U on?
Who's the host?
Still here.
Host, yes. He's working on it.
Awesome.
I think Eric, just to read into the record, the, the application is Cheney Man- Property Management Corp., Tax Map U for lots 12, 13, 14, and 15. At 50 through 56 Exeter Road.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the info I was looking for. Thank you, Val.
And it, it is a public hearing.
Oh, I thought it wasn't, Diane.
Excellent. Well, that's how, in his.
See if you can do it now.
How Susan drew up the notice, but I think it was if the public is interested in speaking, it's up to the chair to open it up and they may do.
Well, I'm certainly going to let the public speak. So with the public hearing, then I open, I open up the public hearing then.
Right. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Seibert.
Thanks. So this is Walter's property. It is 54, 56 Exeter Road. We were in, around five years ago, we have a, an existing approval for basically the same footprint, except it was less units. And that approval has lapsed and I think Walter has extended that. What he's done is we're coming back in and I don't, hopefully you can see my cursor, but this property right here to the north, which goes up parallel to the railroad. This is 108 right here, going this way. This is the railroad tracks. You can see them right there. Walter has added a small piece of property that was once owned by the town right in, right here, and then has recently purchased this point seven five or seven six tenths of an acre right here that was owned by the railroad previously. And so tonight, we're here with a, kind of an, an extension or a, an amendment to this plan and just under design review. But we propose to add an additional 15 units. So one more story. And, but in this proposal, there will be two handicap units right here on this northerly end of the building on the first floor. And instead of, I think we had about 13,000 square feet of commercial space originally, we're at about 11,000 square feet of commercial space here. We've extended some of the parking lot and down in this area and down in this narrow area in, in the, on the new property here. And we've moved the trash and recycling area down here and then moved this circulation through the property this way to extend that down. Both this addition of this additional property gives Walter, of course, a few additional units. Combined with the four plus acres that he already has here, and then also tremendous amount of additional parking, snow storage, and best of all, and, and the reason, one of the main reasons for this is surface drainage. If you remember right, and, and maybe you do, maybe you don't, but the original plan has an underground drainage system here. You know, they work well, but they, they need maintenance. You, when you put them under a paid parking lot, if you have to repair them, it's, it's costly to do that repair. And of course, the construction of an underground stormwater treatment system is also costly. So this allows Walter to, to remove this underground system here, which you don't see there anymore, and allows me to put, you know, a rain garden or a, a, a stormwater treatment system out in this location out here. And we haven't designed that whole system yet, but we, we have set up the grading preliminarily and we have looked at, at the option and the ideas of how we would make that drainage work. And it, it'll be a better system and much easier maintained and it'll, it'll work in a very similar way, but just be a lot easier. None of this front area right here, or I guess the back area of the parking, basically the footprint is exactly the same. We're just adding another story. And again, if you remember, there was a little stormwater pond here, which we're maintaining and we'll keep that in place. And then this is obviously the access, which is the current access to the, to the business park and, and we would utilize that in the same manner that we were, were doing before. And just, let me see here. Just quickly, this is the first floor right here. These are the additional handicap accessible units right here with the access right here. And then this is the remainder of the commercial space. And if you remember from five years ago, I think this is pretty much identical here. There's the second floor of small residential apartments there and then the third floor, which is just a mirror image. And then the building, this is the, kind of the architectural, it's a little bit crowded here with all the, I'm sorry, we didn't get a little bit nicer picture, but this is the kind of the work in progress of the newly designed. But if you remember this, basically to this point right here, going right along this line right here, if you just take that off and drop that roof down to there, that's what it looked like five years ago. And we're proposing just to add this one story right here and just raise a roof up exactly as it was before. So I don't, I think that's all I have unless, if I've forgotten something, Walter will certainly jump in and say that, but I don't believe we have much more and we, we, we are just here kind of looking for some feedback and opinions and, and comments and so forth.
Oh, I could chime in briefly.
Great.
So in this project, we looked hard at how we can improve its viability. I have been suffering with this thing for a while in trying to get it built or sold. And, uh, you know, this is a good compromise on trying to make it a viable project for either somebody to do both, whether that's me or somebody else. Time will tell. We have tried to, as in the past, minimize as much of the parking as we could. And we've actually decreased some of the parking because at the end of the day, we have 95 spaces on site and all of downtown has about 65 supporting all the businesses down there as far as street parking. So we looked hard at that and figuring out we could modify that and maybe shrink it down. And we decided to go from the 108 down to 95. We felt that should down the road, we have an issue because thank God, the businesses are doing so well that parking's a little crowded. We, we have the ability to add additional parking, whether it's for waitstaff or other tenants down in the snow loading area because it wouldn't be on a regular basis. It might be on holidays. It could be, you know, some other factor that might cause that excessive parking need. But overall, we, we thought hard about it. We said, you know what, we, 95 is a lot of parking for any business or any building in and itself. So I just wanted to point that out, that we are under what the regulations call, but we felt that it was a good compromise without going excessive. That, and you know, it's like a mall, you know, you go to a mall anytime other than a holiday, it's 90% empty. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we understood that the application we put forth did not have the adequate parking based on code. But we do feel that it will easily meet any requirements and should it not, we have the ability to add additional down the road.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cheney. So I think the, the way I'd like to handle this is I'll just go poll board member by board member, see if you have any questions for the applicant or, or his engineer. I'll start with Val Shelton. Val?
Thank you. So first question, Mike, so the footprint has changed or has not changed?
No, it hasn't changed.
Okay. And then you mentioned the small apartment size. What size are the apartments on average?
There, aren't they under a thousand square feet?
Correct. They are roughly 900 and something square feet. And let me clarify. Footprint changed a little bit. We pulled the original elevator corridor out of the building and we put it in the middle, that little bump out there.
Okay.
Is the elevator corridor. So we did change the footprint mildly to, to accommodate that.
Were there, were there any, were there any restrictions on the number of units in the variance that was granted? Cause I believe this came in under the B1 zoning and not the M2A.
No, this was the M2A.
This was the M2A.
Eleanor, can I address that, please? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you and I talked the other day about this and I misspoke. This did not come in under the B1 zoning. I was confusing it with the one across the street, Mr. DeWitt's project. This did come in under M2. However, there are some variances that would be required and at the appropriate time, I'll review what those are. But I wanted to clarify that it did come in under the M2A zoning and it was the first project that came in after that zoning was, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Go ahead, Val. Continue on.
So you mentioned you'll need a waiver for the, the, the decrease in parking, correct?
Yeah.
And then do you, are you foreseeing any waivers you'll, for drainage?
Uh, no. Nope.
And how much would this proposal increase the imperv- the impervious surface of the project?
Um.
And you don't have to know. I'm just saying, I'm throwing these, these would be issues that I think we would want to follow up on.
Oh, yeah, for sure. You know, I don't have that calculated specifically, or I didn't list it on here. But I, I'll have that for you.
And then my only other comment, just, you know, first time I saw it was tonight.
Yeah.
First of all, I love the concept. I love the fact that, that Mr. Cheney, that you're really trying to kind of improve that whole section of town. It's obviously considerably undertaxed at this point, you know, for the, the benefit of the town. It, it, you've done a really nice job kind of cleaning up the site, but it's still a blight. So I think it's important that we do move forward with getting some kind of development there. So I'm fully supportive of getting this, these parcels and and obviously the, the initial investment that you're incurring to, to improve the project, to get it going. So so I do want to, you know, just mention, I do appreciate that. The question I have on the new design of the building, has any consideration been given to perhaps looking at somehow trying to change the visual mass of the building by going up to that third story? And maybe if you can talk to your architects about that.
Yeah, originally, you know, my game plan was to try to come in with some kind of a train kind of looking building. But of course, with the third floor or the second floor, kind of changed that a little bit. I think down the road, we can easily mitigate that by, you know, I don't know if you've been up to North Conway, but they got some great buildings up there towards the north end of North Conway and they've broken them up with either various colors so that they almost represent a separate building as you're going down, even though it's all one building. There's a lot of different ways. I have not approached the architect as of yet as to how we can maybe accomplish that, but I, it is also on my plate to try and make that not be such a large one mass building.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Val. Bill Doucet, do you have any, any comments? Did you abstain from this?
I need to abstain.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Christian Matthews.
Hey, I had a couple of questions. Walter, do you all own the parcels right behind this in the business park?
Yeah, well, no. I, I sold a couple of them off. I do own one, which is what they call unit A, which is the furthest one back.
And what about the parking lots back there?
They are all individual and they all have assigned parking based on their units. They're all equal. They each have 28 spaces amongst each unit. So there's another place that should, you know, we have a boom of need. There's certainly other places we could put overflow.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly the kind of question I had is had you talked to them about parking? You know, when I hear the number of 95 spaces under a regulation, but in my opinion, the regulation means it's too high and 95 sounds a lot to me. We're about to hear from Kyle on the, the dangers of impervious surfaces and the negative effects. And so when I see this amount of impervious surface, when I see, I counted about 75 spots in that business park north of you. I go to the dentist there. It's like you said, it's like the mall. It's basically empty most of the time. So I, I, you know, I, you, it doesn't sound like you've talked to them. I, I think it'd be really nice to hear, you know, is there an opportunity here for shared parking to reduce some of the impervious surfaces that, that this is going to create? That's, that's just one question. The second question is that was there any thought to pedestrian access? This is about point three miles from Johnny Boston's, point six to the library. That's all perfect walking distance. Unfortunately, a sidewalk on 108 is on the eastern side of 108. And have you thought about a way to get people from this property over? Otherwise, they have to walk all the way down to Bennett Way where there's none of those flashing hawk beacons like in downtown, then go across, then go up. I mean, at that point, I think you're just going to see a bunch of people trying to jump 108 and there's a hill coming southbound. I mean, this is, seems like a really dangerous place for pedestrians who probably will jump the tra- jump the road there.
Well, as far as the, the, the talking to the business park about parking, both of the current tenants up there are very nice. We've been allowed to use the parking for various functions in the past and that, you know, the business hours are X. I, I don't believe that it would be a problem. As far as impervious goes, there's a lot of new technology out there to minimize that, whether it's through porous pavement or as you can see, the retention areas. We'll be able to mitigate a lot of that onsite based on this new technology to some degree. So as, as, as massive as it sounds, it won't be as bad as you think.
Walter, let me interject before you go too much further. I would stop there because if, if, if we have an active board member that's talking about reducing parking spaces, we should jump on that bandwagon. We can absolutely deal with the drainage. I, I don't take that away, but we are all for reducing impervious. Please, if, if, if there's a way to help or if we could be encouraged from board members for a larger waiver to that, we're, we're all for that 100%. Oh, and I'll, I will address, so we are reconstructing the sidewalk and this wall right here. This, this area right here is a, a pedestrian patio that you can come out onto from this whole first floor area. And then there's a stairway here. I don't think we'll get like a crosswalk right here. As you say, it's, it's a pretty, it's not a great location, but there could definitely be a crosswalk looked at possibly by, with DOT, maybe in this location, right at the entrance here, which would get us right onto the sidewalk right there. So that's a great question.
Yeah, that, that sounds awesome. The only other question. So you, you pointed out that, that green pedestrian space. I, I couldn't tell that from the diagram at first. But is, you know, are you envisioning any restaurants possible? But is, you know, are you envisioning any restaurants possibly coming in here? The only reason I'm asking is that in our downtown restaurants that don't have an outdoor seating area are really struggling. And I don't see, and maybe that space is big enough for a restaurant, or if that wasn't the intended purpose, but it's, have you thought about the possibility of having outdoor areas? Because maybe we're not getting through COVID for another two years and businesses will be really struggling without outdoor areas.
This is set up for, I mean, originally it was set up, if I'm not mistaken, was kind of more of a retail, but also for a restaurant, possibility of restaurant. So it, I can't remember the width of this area and, and I'll have all that information when we come back. Also with the new layout here, we have this whole green area right here, which would add some real opportunity there, too.
I, I would like to say that after sitting on many boards here in town over the 80s and 90s, the whole intent of this business park was produce or try to create everything that downtown didn't have. So it was, it was intended to provide outdoor seating from the start. And because that was one of the things that was, that was recognized back then by a lot of these advisory boards as being a need. So yes, there is, there is the access for it as well as the space.
Perfect. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christian. Macau, Saharic, do you have any questions, comments? Did I hear you say none?
None.
None.
I'm having a hard time hearing him. I think he said none. Ted Sealy.
Yeah, I actually just, I, I think Christian, you, you asked some really great questions there. The only other thing I would note is it looks like the height of the building, just for the M2A zone, would exceed, the third floor would exceed the height restriction. So I assume you'll be coming in for a variance request for that.
Can we talk about variances and waivers for a minute, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let's just hold on a second. Diane, can we just go through the board first and we'll talk about those?
I just want to lend some perspective on that whole issue because this is an unusual zoning district. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Just give me a minute, Diane. Who else is? Jane, do you have any questions or comments?
Just one question that kind of goes on to what Ted was probably asking about. With the addition of the additional floor, what does that do for lighting?
Yeah, I don't know exactly right yet. You mean like exterior lighting? Is that what you're referring to, like the exterior lighting?
Yes, because it would be much higher. And what is with the ramifications of that?
Right. I, I don't know that there would be a lot of lighting up on the exterior of the building up high. I know we were planning for lighting under the, this awning right here. If you can see that overhang, like that train station depot thing, there was going to be lighting underneath that originally. I, I don't know if we've really thought about any of the other lighting up high, but we would, I don't foresee us wanting to put any exterior lighting up higher or very minimal.
Okay, we'll just wait to see then when the finals come through.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions or comments. First for Mike, it seems as though I remember in the, the last time when this was conditionally approved, there was, there was a lot of discussion relative to what actually Christian brought up, his sidewalk. Would you refresh my memory, explain to, to the board and any of the public that's listening, why you couldn't extend the sidewalk along the, you know, down towards Jerry Ave on your side of the, of 108? Was that an issue with the railroad? Wasn't that an issue with the railroad, trying to get across the railroad and?
Answer that. The, the problem with that is, is my property physically ends really at where the state line goes off at an angle right there. I don't know if you can kind of show, like, that. So, so I don't own anything from basically the end of the property line that at least on 108, that was originally the last house that I had torn down. This town property has zero frontage on 108. It is all railroad property after, where basically where the wall ended, the stone wall exists now. That is the last of my property. Everything else is, doesn't exist on 108. So I have no ownership of the land to be able to create anything beyond where that sidewalk ends today.
Okay. And, and I remembered something to that effect. I didn't remember the exact, the details of it. Thank you on that. The other thing is one point I'd like to speak about too is, is what Christian brought up too is, is, you know, as, as an engineer and as just a designer, I would really support a significant reduction of parking spaces if you can do it. With, you know, I think we'd, you would have to see some sort of, you know, easements or leases with the people behind you. And obviously you have to balance your reduction of parking spaces with what you actually need for your commercial spaces to make sure it works for you. But I, for one, as a board member, have no issue supporting, reducing pervious area or impervious area. As long as you're comfortable that you still have enough to, to make it work. We don't want to approve something and then have parking, you know, turn into a nightmare out there. That's just a general comment. The other thing is going from, I think the first approval had 11 units and now you're going to 26 units. Does all that, and I apologize, I should know the answer to this, but does all that fall within the zoning requirements? Or does that require relief from the ZBA or any other board?
No, it falls within the zoning requirements. There's 4.85 acres, so we're allowed 29 units under the six units per acre. And so we are at 26. So right now, we're under.
Okay, good. 4.8.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so that's all I had for questions. I guess I will first, before we open up to the public, Diane, you had a couple of things you wanted to address?
I did. Can you hear me at this point?
I can hear you fine. Thank you.
Yeah. I wanted to mention that this is coming into us under the M2A zoning. And for those of you, and Valerie, you were around, Eric, you might have been around, when this came before the planning board for some zoning changes, the planning board had recommended a certain model for the zoning and it was changed at the town council level. And there were some peculiar things that ended up in the M2A zone. One of them is it specifically requires two parking spaces per unit, and that's in the zoning ordinance. So that may require, even though I'm all for reducing the pervious area and spaces, it may require going for variance as opposed to the planning board being able to waive that. So that's something we may have to also take up with legal counsel, given the way it was adopted. But anyway, that was one point. Couple of other things, in this same ordinance, there can't be any residential units on the ground level if they're facing north or Route 108 or Exeter Road. So I don't know, you have two ADA units on the lower floor, so you may have to get a variance for those two. I'm just kind of pointing those out. I think Ted Sealy questioned the height. And one of the things that did carry over, which was good from the planning board's iteration of the ordinance way back when it was adopted, was that there be some flexibility on side yards and rear yards and the height restrictions. And in the zoning ordinance, it talks about the planning board having the authority to make waivers to those requirements under the special youth permit provision in our ordinance. So that's, that's good news. I, I just wanted to, to mention that. And again, I, we, we need to recognize there's a lot of impervious area, anything that could be done to minimize it. There's that, there must be 80 to 90% impervious surface between the parking and the building roofs. And so that's problematic. So anything that can be done to provide some green space that would be in, in conjunction with maybe some outdoor speeding, seating and outdoor spaces for the public, that would be really great. I also wanted to mention that this is going, we can call it amendment, we can call it a revision, but really it's going to be a brand new application coming to the planning board for review. And I just wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware of that. So that does mean technical review, going through a engineering, consulting review process for the stormwater plans, because what you're proposing is really a substantial change to what was originally approved. So given that, I just wanted to make sure you understood. I mean, we can call it what you want. If you want to call it a revision, that's fine. But right now, well, because those conditions haven't been met on that previous approval, you don't have an approval on that previous plan. So, and I know we just provided a one-year extension on that last, you know, at the last meeting. But technically you don't have an approval for that previous plan until you meet all those conditions. Though it may be whom view, if you still want to have that option to implement that in the future, to go forward and get it up to date so that it could be signed if you wanted to have a fallback plan. But anyway, I'm just pointing that out to you.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Is there anybody from the, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, somebody's speaking.
Question for Diane. Diane, I don't have my ordinance in front of me, but so the restriction was on the parking spaces for residential units. Within the ordinance, was there any specific restrictions or requirements for commercial or retail?
No.
So that just, so.
You know, conditions on the size of the apartments and also.
No, I understand that. But so 52 spaces would be required to meet the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And then if we're, the other portion that we would be waiving would be the commercial.
And this is where it comes, there's some legal questions here because when we framed this ordinance to begin with, we wanted it to follow all the other criteria, the M2 ordinance. But when it came back and was adopted, it didn't pick up that finer nuance. So, and the finer nuance is, yeah, in the M2 zone, you can have shared parking, you can have, there's all kinds of flexibility, recognizing that it's not, you know, that, that the land patterns are such that it's really not conducive to meeting that kind of requirement.
I wanted clarification.
Issues and get some legal counsel on that. But I just wanted to put, make you all aware of that.
I just think that the application of clarification, that they may not need a variance on the parking, because you could.
We don't know that, Valerie.
No, my question is, two parking spaces in the ordinance required for residential?
Correct.
There's no requirement in the ordinance for specific number of spaces for commercial?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're right. Absolutely.
Okay.
That's all I have for comments at this point. And, you know, we're, we're to working through these issues with Mr. Cheney.
Yep, Mr. Chair, I had, I had a, just a general question. So if, if, if Walter doesn't own the land up to the railroad, so if, you know, if we are putting this in and they are putting sidewalks, if, if the town want, would it be the town who has to look at doing a crossing or DOT has to talk to 108? Diane, I see, I see you shaking your head. Do you know the answer?
It'd be the town that was going to be.
Any crossing would be, have to be permitted by 108, I mean, by, by the DOT. And then typically on a, on a development like this, it would be up to the applicant to propose a crossing. If, if we, you know, push the issue that we wanted a crossing, they'd have to get that permitted with DOT. Is that correct, Mike Seibert?
Yes.
And, and playing from the Boston May Railroad folks, because they have, they have a certain clearance adjacent to the railroad of, what is it, 15 feet, Mike? Mike Seibert?
Yeah, I mean, I think the extension of a sidewalk is one issue and the request of a crosswalk is another issue. So the crosswalk request would be with DOT. I, I highly doubt we would get a crosswalk across the railroad tracks.
There is an existing sidewalk on the northbound side that travels past this, the train track. So creating possibly two crosswalks, one
one down here.
Where the existing train tracks are and one up closer to the entrance to the business park would probably much more feasible than trying to get a sidewalk created that goes on the southbound side from where it ends now down to say the gas station. The logistics of that are going to be probably cost prohibitive and impossible based on the people you got to deal with. You know, you're talking about the landowners of the gas station, you're talking about the town, talking about the railroad, talking about the state. You know?
Yeah. And Walter, just to be clear, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting you should do a sidewalk there. I just wanted to get my, get refreshed that I recall there being a serious issue with that. And my take on that at this point is this, is that if there was a, if the town wants a sidewalk there at some point, the town's going to have to pursue that because it's going to take a monumental effort with all the property owners, whatnot, to do it. I don't see the town doing that. So I don't see there being a sidewalk there because of the logistics. I certainly wouldn't expect you guys to do that there because you don't have the ability, you don't control the land. So. All right, I'd like to open it up to the public. So go ahead, Diane.
There were just two other things I wanted to mention. In this M2A zone, we're going to have to update, Walter, the physical impact analysis, because you're increasing the number of units. And also there's a market analysis that had to be done. And that's going to have to be updated with the new number of units. Just in that, it is in the zoning ordinance as part of the requirement. But I just want to just let you know, I think last time you worked with Mark Fugier, he did a good job for that. But I just wanted to point that out, that that's something that was added to the regulation by the former council.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this subject? Any of others? Anybody that would like to speak? All right, hearing none, I'm going to close this public hearing. And do you, Mr. Seibert and Mr. Cheney, do you have a date when you'd like to be back in front of us? At this point, you know when?
If I can answer that question, I would say no, right now. Walter would say next month, but we'll try to fit him in as fast as we can and kind of get it, keep it moving.
So I mean, do you want, would it be reasonable for us to continue until the October meeting?
No, you can, if you would like, you can close this design review. I, I, in my opinion, you can close the design review. I think we got a lot of good feedback and we could go away and do our design and then make a formal application, unless Walter, you want to come back one more time or?
That actually makes sense, Mike. That actually makes sense. So why don't we do that? So you, we'll close this portion of it and you can come back with a formal application when you're ready.
Sure. Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Wally. Thank you, Mike.
Great. Good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is Kyle Pimental, SRPC Water Resource Chapter Master Plan Update. Hello, Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to share my screen as well. So I don't know if Tim can help out with that. Oh, we're good. Let's see. Can everybody see my screen now?
Yep, I can see.
Okay. So, so I'm just going to give a quick update of the work that the planning commission has been doing with Newmarket over the past several months. So for those of you who I haven't met yet, my name is Kyle Piment. Planner at Strafford Regional Planning Commission, I've been tasked with, uh, fully informal. So you don't necessarily have to wait to the end. If you, if something doesn't make sense or you want anything clarified, please sort of jump in at any time. A long process. We initially, uh, the planning commission applied for a source water grant through the department. Wanted to do a few different regional, um, drinking water maps, um, that. And so we approached the town of Newmarket. There were a few different things that we kind of bounced a few different ideas upon it, but we, we ultimately set. As though, uh, would be a eligible project under this umbrella. So, um, we, we put that. Source water, uh, application was selected for funding. By the time we got, you know, went through governor and council and everything kind of shakes out. We got the approval to, to move forward in, in August of, of last year. So just about a, a year ago, um, now is when we started this. So, um, if you remember that October, we had first kickoff meeting where it came to the planning board and. Back on some of the things that needed to be addressed within the new chapter. It was eleven years, a lot had changed. After that, a steering committee was put together and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, but we held our first meeting. We met in January, February, and then obviously, um, with what happened with COVID. How we were going to continue to move forward. We actually got an extension from DES, this initial proposal. Thirty of this year, um, but because of not being able to meet. You know, being a little bit up in the air, especially in that March, April timeframe. In June. And hopefully, you know, moving forward into September, October, um, for a final draft put together and then a public hearing and adoption. And I'll talk a little bit more at the end about the next, you know, two to two and a half months of what we. So some of the major goals. The first one being we really needed to reorganize and consolidate the existing chapter. If you go. Doctor now, I want to say it's a hundred and twenty-four pages. A lot of redundancies, um, there, because there is so much overlap. Things were spelled out two, three, four, five different times in, in multiple. To clean this up, we combined sections together. We got rid of things that, um, were just resources. So there were a lot of. Um, additional partnerships and just lists of, um, agencies that. To really consolidate that down to make it a more user-friendly document and something that could be digestible in a way that. References to where. We tried to do the, the way that the chapter shakes out now is, is. Sections, uh, surface and groundwater resources, wetlands, flood plains and potential threats. At the end. Still on, on any of those chapters and, and what they consisted of. But again, you, you should have re. At the very beginning of each, of each section to try to give some. Benefits they provide and then what. Improve upon. Each other. Which really kind of sets the, the tone for, for what is found, uh, within each of those sections. The next goal that we really wanted to. Was providing more guidance, um, policies. That were really specific to existing and future water resource. The prior chapter. A lot of them may or may not have been. It's our, uh, recommendations specific to that section. So the surface and groundwater resources, you're really, the, the recommendations are really focused on that. Same for wetlands, flood plains and potential threats. The recommendations are really kind of geared towards each of those sections. And easier for, for the town to kind of view this. And then the last goal. What to do with, uh, the state recommendation that if we were going to use that funding to update the town's water resources chapter. They. Longer focus on. You know, we're not on the, you know, on, on the table in two thousand and nine. We tried to really look at what types of, including those, but other types of contaminants that town should really be thinking about in terms of not. Uh, water resources, so surface groundwater, drinking water. And to place a, a large focus on that. Threats chapter is a complete rewrite. There was very, there was some sedimentation and erosion control, you know, that was one. And there were bits here and there, but, um, DES. Thinking about as well as the input from Sean Gregg, um, at the town level, giving us feedback on what, you know, the town should really be concerned about. To put in what we know, uh, of what those contaminants might be and, and, and some. A big change and a big goal that we had for this plan that. Just to talk a little bit about the, the guidance for this, for this project, um, our steering committee. Senator Sean Gregg, who's the Water and Sewer Superintendent. Asked, who's not on the planning board anymore, but, but was. He's also, uh, a consultant at VHB and has expertise in, in water resource. Commission and, uh, Val Shelton. So we had, um, a lot of really good participation. Planning board, uh, and other. To really help kind of drive this. I'll also put, you know, I put Pierce's name on here as well. He's one of the. He, he didn't attend any meetings, but he has. Sent him and provided us some, uh, with some monitoring data and where to look. It was reports and really, um, if you've ever looked on. Challenging to find anything. So, uh, he was really helped. Could find certain, uh, information. And so this group here. Of what the chapter is now, they, they helped. Guidance and where we should be going, what data needs we still need. Like I said, Sean was really important on what sorts of emerging issues. Facility, um, over the last few years. You know, now that the town has. Stormwater, uh, which was also new and not, uh, in the two thousand. Mission at the town level that, uh, this particular group helped. The chapter. Just to kind of. This chapter, so again, you know, minimizing the redundancies within the, the sections. Chapter is much more clean, um, than, than. And it's, it's tightened up and that it's focused. I do think it's going to be, it is more user-friendly. It, it will be even more so when we have some photos in there to break up some of the text. And, and there are some additional graphs and maps that will be associated with this in the final version. As well as some of the, uh, results from the visioning, um, process that was done in 2015. So that also will help to, to, you know, make the chapter look a little bit different than it is now. I understand that it's, it's very text heavy, um, but. We also had a, uh, an additional focus, um, through the climate lens and, and looking at adaptation and resilience. This will be in a, a matrix where. Timeline, potential funding sources. So it'll be lined up in a way that will make it even more measurable. Right now, you know, I'm. Kind of track progress and decide what things should be implemented over time. Updated its vision chapter in 2015 and that included a large, uh, public outreach campaign. So we used, and we had a lot of that information. So we use that data. Dangers to the policy goals, uh, to ensure that. And in terms of, and we pulled out specific comments that had to do with water resources to ensure that, that, um, that feedback was incorporated into. The vision chapter. So I think that having those results and having gone through that process a few years. That were used. Um, I already mentioned the, the threats to the water resources section. I, I, you know, I would encourage folks to, to read through. There in terms of the, the different threats for both, uh, surface water and, and groundwater. And that is almost entirely a, a new chat or new section. And then lastly, something that we're working on. Maps, um, so there'll probably be between five or six different maps that are associated with, with the. As well as that implementation matrix whenever we finalize the, the, um, the recommendations. Just some final steps on, on where we're going. To get some comments tonight from, from the board and then have a discussion on, um, maybe setting a deadline to email comments to Diane that she can. And then in September, really start to work on. Pull together any photos, graphics, maps, tables, the implementation matrix, um, and get that in a really good place for, for September. To see the chapter again. But that's a. With that, I'm happy to, to take any comments, uh, questions. And again, looking for any feedback that, you know, this group might have, uh, on the chapter as it stands now. And Diane, if you have, and, and Mikhail, you were part of the steering committee, if you have anything to add, um, you know, happy to, to sort of hear.
Pull the. Your comments. I know you were part.
No, Kyle, I'll send mine to you directly.
Okay.
Spend more time on the last chapter that you did. I mean, it's a lot of pages.
Yeah.
It is. That is definitely the longest of the, of. Ten pages or something like that. So that one is definitely. Is. Only section. And if you look at it in your PDF, that is all. And reviewed by the. Section has not. Most.
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, Mr. Doucette, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you, Bill.
Couple of questions. So it's just like, and I, and I can just briefly talk about those. It's just, um, the buffer options for the bay sounded awesome. I think just, you know, from, from the, with my town council hat on, I started thinking. You emailed back, there were a list of recommendations, it sounds like. So kind of looking at the documents, all the recommendations, that's how I'm looking at it. What can we do? What can we start implementing? You know, things like folk. That it's maybe something that.
Yeah, I think so. So your original. As part of this. Set, which is. Big transportation related data set, um, that does. Data associate. As well as aquatic organism passage and whether they can handle certain storm events and whether they have flooded in the past. It is a pretty slick online database. And the question that, uh, Christian had asked was, can we pull that list out and organize it to sort of start to prioritize which. I need to be replaced. And I, I, my answer is that, that might. need to be replaced? And I, I, my answer is that, that might dues paying member. That is something that our data collection team could probably do relatively easy and get that list to the town council, to the planning board, whichever, for you to at least could be, that could be implementable. Put as low hanging fruit because the data already exists. It's just extrapolating it.
Nice. You'll just like click on everything and mention. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Christian. Mikhail.
The first set of comments and I didn't really have time to look at the, the last chapter where new stuff. So I, I'll go through it and send you some additional comments.
Thank you, Mikhail.
Going through it myself. Did you mention Kyle, when the
So what I would like is to set a deadline for comments from this the chapter itself, the recommendations, and then counts for the implementation matrix in September. So again, and we can talk revised version of the chapter before scheduling a public hearing in October. Again, planning board meeting in September where you, I would ensure that the chapter had that implementation matrix ready.
Okay. Other people on the, on the board, you know, whether the board meeting or to continue the process forward.
Um, yeah, let's just hold that for a minute Ted. It's a, it's a valid question. So Kyle, my comments, I, I have a couple of questions or a question anyways. I know the FEMA has finalized their new flood plan with January implementation date, I believe.
Twenty nine, twenty first, something like that next year. Yep.
That's correct.
It has, as part of this has, have you looked at or has anybody looked at what that does in Newmarket? What is, what's the increase in unbuildable land because of that? Is, is, is that a significant change in town? I don't do any work in town, so I really don't pay attention to that. Just, and that's just curious because obviously that's something that's going to come up. I think would come up in a public hearing if, with or without this chapter. You know, if people have land that all of a sudden is unbuildable because we should be prepared to address that.
That's a really good question. I looked at Newmarket's flood maps. I know that as part of were put together by UNH, they, they should have shown and, and then there's also a layer of whether the floodplain got smaller in certain areas or got larger in other areas. And then there's an associated
Can I speak to that? Fifteen and back, but also since then. So anybody can go online and look at the preliminary maps. And they're a far cry better than what the previous maps were, which were very, very generalized and hard recommend anyone who would like to look at those as they go on to the FEMA website. At one point I did get share that with the, with the board members. I did get an email this week from Jennifer Gilbert at the Office of Strategic Initiatives. And she is working on putting together some recommendations on a town by town basis, updating some work that Chris Northridge did back in, believe it or not, 2014. So we're going to be getting some direct recommendations from them. Gilbert is actually the FEMA flood with them the next week. So I would like on getting the regulations in place. And there'll be regulation changes, not only to zoning, subdivision, site review, possibly building permits, and of course the zoning and and the planning board, we, you know, review the site review and subdivision. But anyway, so that's gearing up at this point. And I just wanted to give an update to the planning board so that they getting all of that up to snout so that we're being compliant.
This your question, Eric? Yeah, this we've her subdivision was done. The flood maps can be re-subdivided now into two blocks. Prior to that, it could not. And then a lot of the parcels that, you know, I deal with in the real estate end along like Smith Garrison Road, a lot of that land has come out of the flood zones because of the elevations. The new maps, Bill might be able to speak to this even more intelligently, but it seems to me from what I've looked at within Newmarket, the new maps are showing that in the residential, you know, areas of town, that the, the new maps are showing that the, those areas are less impacted by the flood, floodplains.
That's okay. That's interesting. Yeah, we don't need to get into a big discussion. I was just curious about that. That's, that's good. But Kyle, other than that, I would like to also say that I, I think you guys did a fabulous job. I spent a bunch of time yesterday and today reading, reading the chapter, and I think it was very, very well put together. Having said that, just in, in how we move forward, if we want to have a public hearing in October, we need to have this back in, you know, let me backtrack. I think we need, I would recommend that we have two weeks, say from tonight to get comments or say next Friday, a week from Friday, get comments to Diane so Kyle can make changes. I think it's going to be a stretch or expect him to incorporate any changes and have discussions or whatever, and have them, have a package ready for us in September, for our September eighth meeting and having time for us to, to read it and to, you know, go through it before the meeting. So I for one am okay with proceeding without seeing the final revision and scheduling a public hearing. And then we can, you know, if you have any comments, we can bring them up at that point. I'd just like to get the general consensus of the board. Do you think, do you think a week from Friday is fine for getting comments into Diane? Do you think it's too soon? Do you think it's too
Isn't that what you put in your original email to me, Kyle? Twenty first?
I don't know if I put a specific date, but I mean, I think I will defer to that, that is a reasonable request. Is it just the eighth and not?
On Kyle.
Okay, okay.
Unless we have other workshops and so forth.
Eighth with the holiday in between that. But what are your thoughts on that, Kyle?
I would agree. I was kind of hoping that, you know, there would be a, a second planning board meeting. So like the 22nd would be fine, but I, I would agree that the September eighth, because if I'm going to get comments on the week anyway, and I don't know if that would give enough time for me to turn it around to give you guys I would be afraid that it would get to you guys too late and we'd have the meeting on the eighth and nobody would have read it yet. So I'm also all the, to review it again in October and then in November have the, the public hearing. There's no, there's no time rush on this for draft by the, by, by the time our grant closed and we have a draft. So if we need to go a little bit beyond, I'm okay with that, but I will defer to the board to, to determine how you guys want to handle that.
Thank you, Kyle. Val, you had something to say? Go ahead.
What's your thoughts on the whole, on the steering committee reviewing this potential threats to water resources section before that section goes to the whole board?
Yeah. So that you, so the, so the planning board and the steering committee got that. So I think what we were thinking is that we would ask the steering committee also to get us their comments by, if we're committee unless you, unless a Zoom call to actually go over it individually. I'm, I'm open to do that as well. Done with the rest of the chapters or the rest of the section. Talk our way through it. I'm happy to, to do that and leave the, and leave the same deadline for the planning board and then set something up in the next two weeks for the steering committee.
I just think not doing it, you're getting potentially eight to 10 comments on one section you know, different people without really having the steering committee give a, a consolidated recommendation to the board.
Okay. So, so Val, why don't we do this? Why don't we say that planning board members comment on the portions of it up to the potential threat of water resources by next Friday. Let the steering committee comment on the, on that themselves and deal with Kyle directly with that. When you have a revised chapter, get that out to the planning board members that we can review and comment that too. Little bit longer process, but you know, I, I, again, I don't think there's a big hurry. So if we could try to have everything ready for us to review or to discuss again in October and try to schedule a, a public meeting in November, I think that's a reasonable schedule. Do you, does that work for you, Kyle?
I'm fine with that.
Val, are you okay with that approach?
I think that makes the most sense.
Okay. All right. Any other board members want to chime in on this?
I agree. I, I think, I, I want to hear the steering committee's comments on that last chapter before I look at it.
Perfect. Perfect. I, I, yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. So why don't we go along on that way? So planning board members, if you have comments on everything but the last portion of that, which is the potential threats to water resources, get them to Diane by next on that chapter to Diane by next Friday in anything else you have, and we'll take it from there. To throw out there, you know, I'm hoping that maybe with live. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm going to have to call Steve. I know the town council is meeting live now, I believe. I'm not real comfortable with a Zoom meeting to, to go through this, but you know,
Mr. Chair, just to add to that, the town council you know, members of the public and, and personally me, I have been participating on
Okay, okay. And I'm, and I'm fine with that. I mean, I, I just think if we can do stuff in publicly
Eric, I would be fine with that. I went watching the council meetings and they see that seems to be working well. And I just think
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I agree. I had to break up. Unless anybody has anything else, we'll let Kyle go and we'll continue on with our meeting.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle. Thank you, Kyle. Next on the agenda is new old business. Diane, do you have any new business you want to discuss?
Well, we talked about the floodplain stuff, so I think we're okay with that. The only thing is we are going to be getting letters out to the CIP committee members by the end of this week. Short timeframe for completing it this year. And so we're condensing with the CIP committee meeting sometime during the last week. Be four near by the 15th and I will be sending out information. I know Ted's been anxiously waiting to get involved. My hope is to get all that stuff organized this week so that we can move that forward quickly. But we're going to try to streamline it this year instead of have site visits and meet individually with department heads. And we're also going to be doing more of an update this year than all I have to report on at this point. Thank you.
I had, I want to follow up on the detached ADU discussion from last meeting.
Yes, I was going to say that's old business, but that's fine. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, I can, I can wait if someone had new business.
Have any new business? All right. Oh, oh, go ahead, Bill.
I had a question for Diane. At the last meeting, you had a possible project off railroad Ave. Is there any new information on that?
It was just, I had his name is Ben. And he works for ProCon Construction Company and he's been purchasing to do some redevelopment. I did have a meeting with him where we kind of looked at the zoning and I don't have anything definitive at this point, but he's working on some concepts and we'll be coming forward with some ideas and possibly conceptual, conceptual design review sometime this fall. And he was, is interested still in the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority's low income housing tax credit at this point, but it's in the works.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any new business?
I have
Oh, go ahead.
Jane Ford to the capital improvement plan. She wasn't you, Mr. Chairman, in your capacity as chair, if you could appoint her to be our alternate to assist
Absolutely. Jane, is that true? You want to be the alternate?
Yes, I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, Jane.
Awesome. Um, all right, so you know, you want to talk about the ADU, um, process? Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that it also leads to a broader conversation, which is that, um, you know, from, from the, I don't know how it's been done on the planning board before. And so someone please jump in and say it. Um, so if there wants to be a zoning change, um, the town council can recommend that to the planning board. The planning board can look up the specific language. They can there is also some sorry, Ben, you had a correction already?
It could go either way, but I think the important thing is that the planning board is supposed to be part of the process, um, early on. And it makes more sense. We have had instances where we've had joint meetings with the council and we've agreed jointly that, yeah, this is a good idea. Let's work together. When we did the mill redevelopment, that's the process. Um, but there is an ordinance that's in, in the books, I think. Uh, zoning changes, uh, with the town council and you may want to visit that. Um, but typically they're initiated by the planning board and, you know, we go through our planning process where we solicit input from the public and maybe do some stakeholder groups, um, and put something together, work it through our public process, then it goes to the town council for adoption. And of course they have their own process for first and second reading and, um, so it's kind of with, when, when you have two parties involved, it's actually a duplicative process, but it brings in a lot of input from um, cogent as a, a public planning process.
Yeah, I, I think the eye is spot on. It's like you have so that I think some of the hesitancy from town councillors is that may, maybe talking, say town council, hey, we're interested in looking at this. Um, you have, you know, we want to do this. You the planning board, you run with it. I think maybe I want to start with that conversation, which is, you know, kind of how do you all feel? Um, I know Val has a perspective on this also.
Val, I'll let you start by, by giving your, your perspective on it because we've gone down this road on other issues before. So what, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, well, I think the planning board, I mean, we should have our priorities as to, you know, um, and if we need any town, you know, like staff resources, how that will be incorporated in. Um, so I think as a board, we really need to prioritize what we want to be working on. And then we definitely, when we've talked about it before, there's a lot of updating that needs to be done, um, within our ordinance, within our planning board ordinances.
Yes, I, and I I agree with that, that, um, approach. Um, what I don't want to do, and there's no want to spend a lot of time reject it, um, which has, has happened in the past, um, which, which is, you know, I mean, that's the process. It is what it is. Um, um, first of all, we, I think we need to poll the, um, the planning board members and see, you know, what kind of priority this is for them. And if it's a priority for, you know, majority of the board, then we certainly can, um, start going through the, through the process. Think, um, that with, kind of with the okay um, I think I should, um, arrange a meeting with Steve Fornia, um, you know, the town administrator, town manager now, right? Um, because obviously we could prioritize it, but if Diane isn't given the resources to, to do what we need to do, then we're just going to be spinning our wheels. So it's kind of a two-pronged, um, I think, I think as, as Val said, there's a lot of things that we can really look at, um, updating in, in our, um, regulations, certainly. Um, I have no problem with this being one of the priorities. Thinking about, um,
So I almost think my thoughts are irrelevant.
By having, you know, public hearings and whatnot going through the process.
Worth asking we got some input earlier this evening.
Sure.
Does the community see this as an important thing?
Yeah, good. Yeah. I mean, that's a, that's a valid, it's a valid point. Um, who else is on? Jane, what are your thoughts?
I would tend to agree with Bill about, you know, trying to get everyone's viewpoint on that. It, 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 it is important.
Community and you know, do you start because I just don't feel, um, yeah, I just don't know what they're going to say, really thinks about small ideas. So I, to myself, I, I agree, it would be a great idea, but, um,
I, I would have a question about the, the list of priorities, right? That were projects, things that can be updated. Do we have sort of you know, we've talked about in the past and what are priorities that, that we've brought up or that community members have brought up? Like where, you know, where does that kind of stand in general? And I think that would, that would help us inform that decision.
You know, I mean, there's so much that we could do to upgrade, update a lot of our information. I think we could, you know, it could be an endless task, but, um, Diane or Val?
One of our biggest roles. We reviewed, um, think that we could revisit that. These chapters, we actually just if we want to add in any new chapters. So I think that's important to have kind of a roadmap there for not just this board, but future boards to be moving towards. Um, just a couple of the comments, uh, just in regards to the master plan and more public hearings. I think it behooves us to just go back to our current master plan and look, re-look at the housing chapters and see, you know, um, in, in the demographics chapters and see where though, what recommendations were in those particular chapters that we haven't implemented yet. And that, you know, this whole idea of, you know, the AD um, you know, I've always been a proponent of the detached ones. Um, I think it does serve a need for any